Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to the December meeting of the Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our October 26th meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Are there any suggested changes to those proposed minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous Jim Buttel, Chair of District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, on behalf of the District Eight delegation, I rise to acknowledge the ten years of service of Rick Kroll, who chose to retire from the Representative Town Meeting after ten years of service to this body. Rick has not been an ordinary member. He stepped in to serve two terms as Chairman of District Eight, and from personal experience, I can tell you that that is no simple task. In addition, Rick has served as Chairman of the Public Works Committee for two terms, and is the owner of Beacon Point Marine and the Greenwich Water Club. Rick has generously sponsored the RTM directory on numerous occasions. Although this body will not benefit from Rick's judgment, leadership, and generosity, the town will continue to benefit from his active participation in the Greenwich Chamber of Commerce, the Greenwich Shellfish Commission, the Connecticut Maritime Coalition, as an active supporter of rowing in Greenwich, and most importantly, as a Greenwich youth football coach of the Cos Cob Crushers. I ask that these remarks be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and a copy be presented to Rick as a sign of our appreciation for his leadership in this body and dedication to our town.
I almost asked that we rise in a moment of silence, but...[205.81][205.81](LAUGHTER). Is Leslie Moriarty here? Leslie Moriarty, Chair of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.[223.12][223.12](APPLAUSE). I'm here tonight because I want to invite the RTM members to help participate in the search for the new superintendent. The Board of Ed has started on this process. We have hired Hazard Young and Atiya as our search firm, and we plan to engage in a national search to fill this very important position. The search is driven by the development of a leadership profile. This profile outlines the key attributes, characteristics, skills that we are looking for in a new leader. It will be developed over a period of a few weeks in January by a series of some interviews, focus groups, and also three community forums. And I'm here tonight to invite the RTM members to participate in this process. The community forums will take place on January 9th and 10th. Now, I know those are the RTM committee meetings, and sorry for the double scheduling, but there will be three sessions, so hopefully you'll be able to make one of those. If you're not able to make those, we will also have an online survey, which will be up on the public schools' website starting right after the New Year. And that process will also give you a seat at the table in identifying what characteristics you think are important in the next superintendent. The dates will be posted on our website. We will try and advertise them as widely as we can. If we're able to put the schedule into the RTM call for January, we'll ask if we can do that. And I just want to ask you, to encourage you to participate, because this is really such an important process that we're starting and clearly a very important position for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.[321.14][321.14](APPLAUSE). Was there anyone else who'd asked to be recognized at the beginning of the meeting? All right, that brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. As I informed our district and committee chairs, it is the consensus to place four of our six items on the consent calendar. Those will be items two, three, four, and six, and I will do that shortly. That would leave to consider separately item number one, which is the appropriation and bonding authorization regarding Nathaniel Witherell, and item number five, an appointment of Mr. Settlemire. All right. At the present, then, I will put, place on the consent calendar the following four items. Item number two is an appropriation of $207,097 with respect to tropical storm damage at Byram Beach and Marina. Item three is the appointment of Stephen Bishop to be a member, a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2017. Item four is the appointment of John Sluzars to be a regular member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring March 31, 2015. And the final item that I am placing on the consent calendar, item number six is the appointment of James Doherty to be a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2015. Is there any objection to the placement of those four items on our consent calendar? If they remain on the consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports or discussion on those items. Any objection? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items two, three, four, and six, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will take up the first item on our call, item number one. David Ormsby, Chair of the Nathaniel Witherell Board.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the Representative Town Meeting and distinguished guests, I would like to place on the floor for debate the resolution authorizing the appropriation and the bonding authority for a major rehabilitation of Nathaniel Witherell, the town's skilled nursing facility, all in the form in which it is set forth as item number one in the call for the meeting.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item one has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee? Mr. Wells, let me just state, there are signup sheets for any interested speakers on item number one. There is a sheet up front, and there are sheets as you come into the auditorium in the back. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. Legislative and Rules Committee took up item number one on December 5, and appearing on behalf of the proponents was Nathaniel Witherell Board Chairman David Ormsby. Mr. Ormsby began by giving us a brief history of Nathaniel Witherell's efforts to obtain a certificate of need and partial state funding for renovating the facility. The certificate of need was obtained from the state shortly after the Malloy administration was in place. The certificate allows for a $22.5 million renovation project, now known as Project Renew, and whereby the state will fund the project up to $12 million. This funding will come to the town by way of an enhanced Medicaid payment from the state. Mr. Ormsby explained to us that the state currently reimburses us $252.63 for each day of care provided to a Medicaid patient. The amount will go up by $13.70 for the next 20 years until the funding cap of $12 million is reached. Mr. Ormsby then fielded questions from the committee. He provided us information about the number of admissions to Nathaniel Witherell, and he said of those admissions, approximately 90 percent of those admitties have a Greenwich connection, which he defined as either people who live in Greenwich, people who have a close relative, a parent or a sibling who, while they may not be in Greenwich, there is a Greenwich resident who bring them to the facility. He provided responses to the BOC report. He believes that the report is inaccurate in that it seems to suggest that the ownership structure of Nathaniel Witherell hinders Witherell from obtaining private funding for Project Renew. The Health Dimensions Group report indicating the taxpayers of the town of Greenwich will be obliged to pay over the 20-year bonding term approximately $22 million to pay for the shortfall created by the debt service and operations of Nathaniel Witherell. Mr. Ormsby responded that it would be impossible to project what the actual cost would be. He indicated that the approximately $2 million difference between the cost of Project Renew and the amount in the bonding resolution is because the difference was previously bonded in connection with the planning costs. We also had discussions with him about the efficacy of changing the ownership of Nathaniel Witherell and/or phasing out public employees for private employees. Mr. Ormsby pointed out that in 2007, those issues were before the RTM, and we voted not to change either of those two things. Mr. Ormsby also stated he believed the overall project cost of $22.5 million is realistic, and that 85 percent of the project costs will go to upgrading infrastructure. It will eliminate all quad rooms, and the facility go from 26 single rooms to 62 single rooms, which will make Witherell more competitive in seeking private patients. After our discussions with Mr. Ormsby, we looked at the language of the bonding resolutions. There were questions that were circulated through to the town attorney, and I think went to all the district chairman and committee chairman as well. Those questions were answered to the satisfaction of people on our committee, most notably Mary Ferry, who had the questions, and so we were satisfied with the bonding language and the answers provided by bond counsel. We took two votes on the item. The first was as to legal order. Our vote was 12-0-0. We then took a vote on the merits. Our vote on the merits was eight in favor, three opposed, with one abstention. Districts one, two, and nine voted against the resolution, and District Six abstained. Those that voted against the resolution believe that this is an unwarranted expenditure of a lot of money for the service of very few elderly people. And those who voted in favor of it thought that, while they acknowledged there was some considerable spending here for perhaps a relatively few number of people that it serves, it nevertheless falls into the category of things like Greenwich Point or our ferry system out to the islands. It's something that is not an essential service, but something that the town of Greenwich thinks is important to provide.
Thank you. Dr. Karen Foseliotis, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Item one on the call was referred to the Health and Human Services Committee and various members of the Board of the Nathaniel Witherell presented to the committee at both its October and December 2011 meetings. Before I go into the committee discussions, I'd like to take a trip down memory lane so that everybody is on the same page. Here's how we got to where we are today. In 1903, nine acres of land with four buildings on Parsonage Road was donated to the town by Robert M. Bruce. The buildings were named the Greenwich General Hospital and became a hospital for the care of contagious diseases. Seven years later, in 2010, a tuberculosis pavilion was built with funds donated by Mrs. Nathaniel Witherell. In 1917, a new Greenwich hospital was established and moved to its current location on Perry Ridge Road. The facility at Parsonage Road was renamed the Municipal Hospital, and was used solely for the care of communicable diseases. The 1930s saw the decline of a demand for tuberculosis sanitariums thanks to more effective treatments for the disease. This resulted in the pavilion becoming a nurse's residence and later the residence for the head of the Health Department. In 1931, the town charter was changed to allow the town to conduct a nursing home known as Nathaniel Witherell. With an increased need for facility to treat chronic disease, 1933 saw the first major renovation of the facility with the building of a new hospital building, thanks again to Mrs. Witherell. In the mid-1940s, the municipal hospital changed its name to become the Nathaniel Witherell Hospital, and then the town charter granted the authority to Witherell to admit non-residents provided that the non-residents did not interfere with or delay the admissions of residents. In other words, the Witherell Board must give priority to admitting Greenwich residents over non-Grenwich residents to Witherell. From the 1940s to 70s, various changes were instituted at Witherell, including the addition of a one-story wing on the south side of the building, later called the West Wing, the creation of the Witherell Board of Directors by the RTM, the building of a four-story addition on the north side of the building in 1975, expanding the facility to 200 beds, who wished 2,000. Two more beds were then added in the 1990s to bring the number of beds to the current number of 202. In 2000, the short-term rehab services at Witherell were expanded, and the facility was refurbished, and was later followed by an upgrade and renovation of the rehab gym area. In December 2002, the Witherell Board submitted a certificate of need for the demolition and building of a new skilled nursing facility at a cost of $45.2 million. In July 2003, based upon the recommendations of the chairs of the BOC Committee, Finance Committee, and Health and Human Services Committee, the moderator of the RTM appointed a special committee of 14 RTM members. In February 2004, the Connecticut Department of Social Services approved the CON, Certificate of Need, subject to certain qualifications, conditions, and performance criteria that were to be observed by the Nathaniel Witherell Board and the town of Greenwich. The special committee followed with a report in July of 2004 and made comprehensive recommendations for changes in the board's plans for the future of the facility, including, most importantly, the building of the new facility and acceptance of the state's conditions, conversion to a not-for-profit entity to enable Witherell to raise $15 million or more in charitable contributions for the new facility, and to allow the not-for-profit to eventually purchase the new facility from the town and assume responsibility for its operation and other These recommendations were embodied in a sense of the meeting resolution adopted by the RTM at its September 2004 meeting by a vote of 119-57 to 4. The special committee continued its existence as the RTM's principal oversight committee for the Nathaniel Witherell project pursuant to a new charge from the moderator. At the April 2005 meeting of the RTM, a sense of the meeting resolution was brought by 20 or more Greenwich citizens and was put forth to the RTM to amend and correct the sense of the meeting resolution that was approved by the RTM in 2004. That resolution was postponed indefinitely by a vote of 141-21 to 0, so the September 2004 sense of the meeting remained without amendment. Nathaniel Witherell was not before the RTM from 2004 to 2007. The public record is a bit murky, but it can be said that during this time, the Board of Nathaniel Witherell and the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee were extremely active. In 2004, there was a complete turnover of the Board of Directors. Also in 2004, in reviewing the plans for the new Nathaniel Witherell, the Witherell Building Committee and various town departments discovered major flaws with the proposed demolition of the facility, particularly with the cost estimate, which was anticipated to be much higher than the $45.2 million that was originally proposed. As a result, in 2005, the Nathaniel Witherell Board engaged Robert A. M. Stern Architects to make a study of the four main buildings that comprise Witherell. This architectural firm in turn retained six firms to perform various aspects of the physical and functional analysis of the buildings. The project was completed from January through June of 2006, with final cost information determined in September 2006. The project cost of the revised Project Renew was estimated as $36.9 million based on the final approval design and construction costs estimated in the year 2009. The six firms recommended that specific actions be taken to correct efficiencies in systems and structure, to make renovations to the building in order to extend their useful lives for a minimum of 15 years, and to construct a new yet-to-be-designed building to house a relatively new and expanding inpatient short-term rehab service without increasing the institution's overall limit of 202 beds. The short-term physical rehab function was intended to primarily serve new patients recuperating from recent orthopedic, cardiac, and other surgery, as well as long-term Nathaniel Witherell residents requiring rehab services. In February of 2007, the Selectmen, BET, and RTM simultaneously received the revised package, which was now a $36.9 million renovation project and new building. Because of the timing of the information, the proposed $36.9 million project missed the town's CIP cycle, and the project was not part of the first Selectmen's proposed budget that came before the RTM in 2007. As best as I could ascertain from the public records, it appears that the BET Budget Committee also had not reviewed the budget for the revised project during that time either. Although, again, the public record is sparse, sometime during the February to March timeframe, an agreement apparently was reached between those in power to reduce the proposed $36.9 million bonding to $7.3 million for inclusion in the May 2007 proposed budget. The BET approved the $7.3 million allocation on their decision date in March of 2007. In April 2007, the RTM adopted a sense of the meeting that stated if the Nathaniel Witherell new project that was then under consideration by various town bodies was approved by the appropriate authorities, the Nathaniel Witherell would continue to be owned by the town of Greenwich and operated as a town department. There was a caveat to that declaration. The sense of the meeting gave the RTM the ability, at a future date following completion of the project, and based upon a study of the facts then prevailing, to urge the appropriate government bodies to initiate steps to change the form of ownership and operation of Nathaniel Witherell. As mentioned previously, in May 2007, as part of the budget approval process, the RTM approved a bonding resolution that the aggregate sum of $7.3 million be appropriated for the planning, design, and improvements of the Nathaniel Witherell nursing facility, including an appropriation of $3.6 million for construction manager and architects' fees and other preliminary costs, and $3.7 for construction of recommended priority items in the bonding resolution. Following the May meeting, in June 2007, the RTM approved the nominees for the Witherell Building Committee. The RTM Special Committee then issued its final report in October 2007, and the moderator discharged the special committee from further work regarding Nathaniel Witherell. The special committee concluded at that time that the project's capital costs were likely to exceed the current estimates of $36.9 million because, number one, the new building and the major renovations had not yet been designed; two, renovating older buildings and bringing them up to code could reveal unexpected problems; three, deferred maintenance and needed systems work, which would have been remedied by a complete reconstruction program, may or may not get done; and four, experience suggests that town projects tend to cost more than their originally approved estimates. However, the special committee also concluded that the renovations and new construction proposed were necessary if Witherell was to compete successfully for long-term private pay and short-term rehab patients whose revenue contributions would offset the below-cost Medicaid payments made for most long-term care patients. This followed in June 2009 by a vote of 187 to 3 to 2.
Mr. Von Keiseling, you don't have the floor. There's a committee report.
Is this pertinent, report to the committee's work of this section, or is this report history in the last...
No, this is a report of...
Excuse me. Excuse me. Are you raising a point of order, Mr. Von Keiseling?
I was hoping that this report would be through the business of tonight and should have been a report.
Okay. I must give some leeway to our committee chairs. I think your point is well-taken, but I will allow Ms. Foseliotis to continue with her report, but I think we are looking for a committee report at this point, and I assume this is what your committee discussed.
These were all things that were discussed by Witherell at various points in time.
Not at the meeting.
I beg...
Ms. Foseliotis, if you could, please proceed and complete your report.
This brings us to the current proposal. The Board downsized the scope of the renewal project based on it having been rejected for a CON by the state in 2010. In 2011, the Board was able to get a revised CON to include the following renovations: elimination of the 10 four-bed quad single toilet rooms, establishment of 36 new private rooms, increasing the number of single rooms from 26 to 62, establishment for two new semi-private rooms, increasing the number of semi-private rooms from 68 to 70, reallocation of space to provide 25 new private rooms at the garden level, including two rooms for short-term patients and four rooms to be used as swing beds for either short-term or long-term patients, expansion of the rehabilitation wing, installation of a fire sprinkler and suppression system in the administration wing, modernization of the heating and hot water systems, as well as the central boilers, upgrades to mechanical infrastructure including the central plant's HVAC, electrical and mechanical systems, and the emergency generator, parking and circulation drive modifications, landscaping improvement, and improved stormwater management. As a result of their efforts, in February 2011, Witherell received their CON, and they have a potential for reimbursement by the state for up to $12 million. The reimbursement is linked to the number of Medicaid patients that reside at Witherell, and as explained by Witherell, the likelihood is that the town will not realize the full $12 million, since the current and historic Medicaid census has been about 60 percent of the patient population at Witherell. The Board hopes to reduce the Medicaid census to 50 percent long-term. Therefore, the most that the town could expect to recapture, assuming the state is still solvent, is $6 to $7.2 million based on the current and projected Medicaid census. It is also noted that the BET contracted with Health Dimensions Group, whose report was circulated to the committee members, and that report reviewed Witherell's long-range business plan and the reasonableness of projected revenue and operating expenses. HDG also reviewed the costs of the proposed capital improvements. With respect to the review of costs for the proposed capital improvements, HDG concluded that the project's scope was sufficiently vague, and without establishing the appropriate checks and balances within the pre-construction phase, there is a high probability for not obtaining the projected budget. With respect to the revenue and operating expenses, HDG concluded that the estimated total cash needed to fund cash deficits from the operating expenses would be $21.9 million until 2035, when the facility would achieve breakeven cash flow and become self-sustaining. At the October 2011 HHS Committee, the committee agreed also to hear a presentation from various members of the Board and staff of Nathaniel Witherell. It should be stated upfront that unfortunately, instead of a congenial discussion between Witherell and committee members, the questioning was consistently disrupted by the RTM Appointments Chair and one individual, Lloyd Banksen.
All right, Ms. Foseliotis, I'm going to ask now that any editorial comments, please just give a report...
Well, this was in the minutes of our October meeting, so...
Well, is that necessary to your report on item one?
I'm just stating.
All right.
Okay.
Please proceed and wrap up this committee report.
The Witherell Board then noted that, again, reviewed the fact that HDG prepared the Project Renew report, and that initially, Project Renew was expected to cost the town $50 million according to HDG. However, after a one-on-one meeting with HDG, the projected $50 million shortfall was reduced to $21.9 million over 30 years. Mr. Banksen also noted that Witherell will begin paying back preconstruction interest this year. To date, $3.6 million has been utilized of the $7.6 million authorized by the BET and RTM in 2007. They are also hoping for favorable bond interest, and the HDG projections assume 5 percent, but Mr. Banksen noticed that the town was able to recently get a 3.9 percent rate recently. A lower bond interest would also work in Witherell's favor with respect to long-term projections. They also noted that they are working with Hartford to obtain a historic tax credit, which could return up to 20 percent of the total cost of the project. Witherell was granted federal historic status, but there was a sunset with respect to their ability to obtain federal tax credit. They are hopeful of obtaining state tax credit similar to what was done with Parsonage Cottage many years ago. They also anticipate that the burden to the town of Greenwich for the construction of Witherell will be averaging about $850,000 per year as calculated by the consultant HDG. The amount is actually higher for the first five years of the project. However, he noted that HDG did not include the $5 million that Witherell intends to raise. (END TRANSCRIPT). However, he noted that HDG did not include the 5 million that Witherell intends to raise, but if Greenwich Hospital could raise 130 million, they felt that Witherell could raise 5 million. Finally, Mr. Banksen noticed that Witherell is implementing an accounting system, which will allow the staff to give daily live tracking of the services provided to residents and allow them to increase the capture rate of Medicare costs. It is projected that this will enable them to capture an additional 200 to 400,000 in additional projected revenues per year. The Chair also asked committee members whether they had any questions. One member asked whether it was correct that Witherell is asking to bond 20.2 million, but will require a subsidy over 16 years of less than 1 million per year, and also will, during that time, have to pay the town back. He asked how the town bonding of 21 million affects the town's ability to spend money for other projects. Mr. Banksen noted that as a result of the town being on a watch list for a double-A rating, the BET set up a debt ceiling limit. He noted that if Witherell is funded, that it is likely that other CIP projects will be deferred, although what specific projects would be deferred would need to be determined by the BET. At our December meeting, the members also had the opportunity, again, to ask various questions of the Witherell Board and staff. Again, in November, the BET approved Witherell's request for 20.2 million. The BET representative that was there at our meeting also shared with the committee members the conditions that the 22-point million was approved by. The 22-point million was approved subject to the following conditions by the BET: completion of all construction documents and an update of cost estimates; validation of the business plan. As explained by the BET member, this is not a new review of the business plan. The intent is to ensure that the business plan corresponds to the construction drawings and their projected operating expenses. The third condition is an updated environmental testing of the grounds and building area where the renovation will take place. The fourth condition is the conversion of the project from a construction manager from an as-agent to at-risk manager, which will allow the town to take a more active role in overseeing the project. A construction manager as an agent works side-by-side with the town as the owner, and all contracts would be between the town and the contractor. And the fifth would be a review of the final construction bids by the BET. All of these conditions, as explained by the BET member that was there at the meeting, are pass/fail. If one condition fails, the project will not move forward. Some committee members expressed a concern that the RTM was being asked to approve an appropriation based on incomplete information. The BET representative that was present at the meeting stated that the conditions were there to assure that the project was within the projected budget. It was also pointed out that the current members of the BET were familiar with the project, and that many would be now leaving the BET, and the new members would not be as familiar with the project, and could further delay the approval of the project, which is why the BET chose to approve it now. One committee member noted that since the BET conditioned the final appropriation of funds, the new BET would be ultimately approving the project, making that justification a moot point. The BET members also asked whether Project Renew, combined with MISA and the Central Fire Station, would delay other projects, such as the King Street Fire Station, Holly Hill, or the Byram Beach Pool. As indicated, and the Chair read an email from Steve Walco, "The next five years, these three projects will dominate the town's capital model, and little, if any, capital funds will be available for non-routine maintenance items unless, one, there are further cuts to the operating budget; two, taxes are increased above the historical rates; three, non-tax revenue significantly increases; and/or, four, the debt policy is revised." The question was then moved and seconded. The vote was nine in favor, two against, with one abstention. Those who voted in favor felt there were many eyes on the project, and it was just time to move on. The two who voted against the resolution were not in favor of the financial model being proposed by the Witherell Board. One member also stated that she could not vote for the project because it was not shovel-ready, as indicated by the conditions placed on the final appropriations of the funds, and that there was too much emphasis on the short-term rehab versus the long-term rehab. The one member who abstained expressed concern as to the business plan and feels it is ambitious in this economy, although she said that she could also possibly change her mind at a later date.
Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee met on December 5th in the Town Hall Lounge, and all districts were represented. The meeting was called to order at 7:15 and adjourned at 10:05. We start a little bit earlier to accommodate a special guest. As many of you know, a 17-page report was distributed by the committee to all district and committee chairs. Therefore, I'm going to presume that most of you have seen it. So, I come to you tonight with a two-page report. However, if I can have a show of hands, I could reduce it even further. How many are in favor, or maybe a voice vote would be more appropriate, how many are in favor of the shortest version? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee voted in favor of the only positive long-term strategic option presented. There are many short-term tactical reasons why we should vote against this, but they're enumerated in our report. The town directed that the Board develop the best plan for Nathaniel Witherell. The Board was not tasked with finding the best path for the town to take with respect to the Witherell property. We have to understand, we're looking at the Witherell universe and not all things possible. So, at the end of the day, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends a vote of yes on item one, and it passed 12-0-0. Thank you.
Bill Drake, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Thank you. I have a one-page report. In October, our committee adopted a report and a recommendation to vote against this bonding, and I think you all saw that report. This item wasn't referred to us in December, so as a consequence, we didn't vote upon it. The BOC supports Nathaniel Witherell. It's got an important role in our community, and it has passionate support for its important function. We think that a no vote is a vote for a sustainable and permanent solution. We think it's a responsible and positive step, and we invite you to join us. A no vote is not a vote to close the Witherell. The easy answer here is to pass the bill to taxpayers now, and to return to ask for their financial support annually for 20 to 30 years. But instead of the easy answer, we recommend that we choose the right answer. The right answer is to involve all the parties. That would be the Board of the Witherell, the private friends of the Witherell, the Town, the state authorities, the unions, and management to cooperate to design a solution that can last, one that will finally put the Witherell on a sound financial footing and change it to private ownership. That requires a little imagination, but not that much. The examples are no further away than Greenwich Hospital, or many of the other large charitable organizations in this town that raise larger sums than this. So, it's not a great leap of imagination. Conscientious management has done a lot to improve operations and to plan this project. Nonetheless, this plan is not a solution. Witherell will not be master of its future. It will require annual support in larger amounts. A municipality is not a nursing home, nor the owner of one. For the sake of the town, and for the sake of the residents of the Witherell, the time is now to get it right. We can do this. A successful financing of Project Renew will lessen, not increase, the expense burden on Greenwich citizens. It will free substantial capital for many other needed projects in town. It will put the facility in private nonprofit hands, for whom running a nursing home is a priority activity, and it will strengthen private support for the Witherell. This plan doesn't do any of those things, but a successful plan would. The Witherell has an important role, let me say it again, an important role, in serving the healthcare needs of our town. It has passionate support, and the support is well-deserved, apart from its challenging finances. Our committee voted to recommend a no vote. I'm going to vote no, because I have confidence we can do better. When Mrs. Nathaniel Witherell made her founding gift in 1910, her vision was one of creative private support. We can have as much imagination and ambition today.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Porter, please state your point of information.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, would you ask the last reporter to indicate what the vote was?
Mr. Drake, did the committee take a vote?
No. As I said, the item wasn't referred to us in December, so we didn't vote on it in December. In October, we adopted the report that you all saw.
Was there a vote on that?
Sure. The vote at that time was five in favor. That was districts three, five, six, seven, and 11. Two against, that was districts four and 10. And two abstaining, that was districts two and eight. I think all the reasons will be reasons that you will hear this evening, if you haven't heard them already.
Thank you. All right. Bob Tuthill, District Four.
I move that the debate tonight be limited to three minutes, per speaker, per motion. With the exception of the principal proponent and principal opponent, the latter to be determined by the moderator, shall have 10 minutes each. Thank you. Is that my-
All right. It has been moved and seconded to limit debate on item one. The terms of the limit are that each speaker shall have up to three minutes per motion for each speaker, with the exception that the proponent, who will be Mr. Ormsby, shall have up to 10 minutes. There was also a provision that the principal opponent, to be determined by the moderator, would also have 10 minutes, and I will tell you in advance that I do not intend to designate a principal opponent to this. So, those are the terms of the motion to limit debate, which has been moved and seconded. A motion to limit debate is not itself debatable, and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the proposed limit on debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion has carried. So, a reminder to all speakers that there is a three-minute limit in effect. Last call for anyone who would like to get on the speaker list, I believe, I would suggest that you come forward and sign the one at the front of the hall. The other list in the back has been brought forward. Let me also, before I call on Mr. Ormsby to begin the debate, let me remind everyone what the vote is that is required. Because item one authorizes the town to bond this project, the Charter, this is Section 17 of the Charter, provides that an authorization to bond requires a majority vote of the entire membership of the RTM. We have 230 authorized members. Whether or not there are any vacancies, that number determines what is required under Section 17 pursuant to an opinion we received from our town attorney. So, that means this item requires an affirmative vote of 116 members tonight. All right. We'll begin, before I call Mr. Ormsby, you will be the next speaker. I do have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items two, three, four, and six. Those in favor, 178. Opposed, 1. Abstaining, 0. The consent calendar items have carried. All right. Mr. Ormsby is our first speaker to be followed by Libby Florin, our state representative. Mr. Ormsby is the Chair of the Nathaniel Witherell Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM and distinguished guests, thank you for the opportunity to address this assembly. American society is aging. Although people are healthier longer, many are also living long enough to suffer serious age-related chronic illnesses. Frequently, the final days of our elderly are characterized by a lengthy period of debility, frailty, and dementia, or even Alzheimer's disease. Caring for loved ones under these circumstances is invariably a physically exhausting and emotionally draining experience for family members and caregivers. Since 1903, Nathaniel Witherell has been an essential component of the continuum of care offered by the Town of Greenwich. For many, Nathaniel Witherell represents a final support system for our weakest and most vulnerable citizens. Our 300-plus enthusiastic and vibrant volunteers, many of whom are children from the local Greenwich schools, who contribute their time and energies to enriching the remaining days of our residents, learn a valuable lesson in civics, compassion, and respect for the elderly at Nathaniel Witherell. I cannot say it better than the Special Committee of the RTM did in August 2004, when it said, quote, "Nathaniel Witherell ranks with our schools, housing authorities, museum, and recreational facilities as valued quality-of-life amenities, which collectively distinguish our community. It also reflects our community's longstanding sense of social responsibility toward our infirm and elderly and their families," close quote. Project Renew has been a long journey for Nathaniel Witherell. It began in 2002 with a proposal for a new, smaller facility, which was abandoned in 2006 by the present Board of Directors, is unnecessarily expensive. A $38 million variant of Project Renew was derailed in 2010 by reason of the state's financial circumstances. Through the perseverance by the present Board, the town's leadership, and our present legislators, and a change in the political administration in Hartford, a consensus has gradually emerged for support of a less costly project, which will enjoy state financial support, and which will remedy the most serious deficiencies of our nursing home and cure its non-compliance with the public health code. Project Renew, which will cost approximately $22.5 million, has now been approved by the state of Connecticut, the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency, the Board of Selectmen, the Commission on Aging, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Architectural Review Committee, the Historic District Commission, and finally, by the Board of Estimant in taxation in a 12-0-0 vote on November 21 of this year. We now seek your approval of the project and the issuance of 22.2 million of bonds by our town to finance the construction. I think it is important to note what a vote for approval of Project Renew does not do. By your approval tonight, the town does not turn a $22.5 million construction project over to the unsupervised execution of the Board of Directors of Nathaniel Witherell or the Town Building Committee and walk away from it. The BET has attached five release conditions to its approval, which will assure continued oversight of the construction process and the Nathaniel Witherell business plan at significant milestones. The town has also hired Turner Construction Company, a firm with considerable experience in town building projects, including Greenwich Hospital, the Glenville School, Greenwich Country Day, Sandwich School, and Greenwich Academy, to manage the construction process. I am confident that the cooperative expertise of the Town Building Committee, the BET, and Turner, will contribute to a lower risk profile for the town. By your approval tonight, you do not alter the sense of the meeting resolution adopted in April 2007, when the RTM directed that Nathaniel Witherell continue to be owned and operated by the town, but reserve the right, quote, "at a future date-" and operated by the town, but reserve the right, quote, "at a future date following completion of the project and based on a study of the facts then prevailing, to urge that appropriate governmental authorities initiate steps to change its form of ownership and operation," close quote. For those in the audience who may philosophically believe the town should not be in this business, a vote against Item One will not take us out of this business, but it will hasten a future in which losses at Nathaniel Witherall become increasingly probable and so tarnish a town treasure that your exit options become more limited and more expensive. For those present tonight who are concerned with the crowding out of future capital projects for a period of up to five years, let me remind you that for nearly 10 years, some version of Project Renew has been on the town's capital improvement agenda. Nathaniel Witherall has waited patiently, politely, and without complaint as the town has proceeded with improvements to schools, firehouses, safety complexes, and all manner of other town-owned facilities. Now, I would suggest it is Nathaniel Witherall's turn. Your approval of Item One does not prohibit meritorious capital projects in the next five years. Both MISA and a new central fire station are provided for, and if a sufficiently compelling case for a new capital project can be made, it could be financed through appropriate reductions in the operating budget, a one-time tax increase above historical rates, or a revision in the town's relatively new debt policy. While the present board and staff have operated Nathaniel Witherall as a Medicare five-star facility without cost to the taxpayers of the town for the last four years, and incidentally have also paid more than $2.8 million in cash to the town for support services, we think the debt service associated with the bonds we ask be authorized will require some town support. Based on the most recent advice from the Finance Department concerning probable interest rates, we believe town support would be between $700,000 and $800,000 annually during the period the debt is outstanding, before Nathaniel Witherall resumes profitability. At the high end, that cost represents less than one-fifth of 1% of the town's current operating budget. Meanwhile, I would expect the same financial discipline which has resulted in four consecutive years of profitability at Nathaniel Witherall to continue. One of your members has suggested that a negative vote and the postponement of Project Renew would permit a reconsideration of Nathaniel Witherall's future and the development of a new model owned by a nonprofit corporation. He would turn the clock back and begin all over again. In 2007, after a thorough discussion by a vote of 170 to 26, this body confirmed its desire that Nathaniel Witherall be operated as a department of the town. Over the intervening five years, the board has developed a business plan and a model for a viable and rejuvenated Nathaniel Witherall along many of the lines originally suggested by the Richardson Committee. If we now start over, the $2.4 million invested to date in Project Renew has been wasted. With hard work, we've been fortunate to obtain a certificate of need which obligates the state to fund a portion of Project Renew. I think it is unlikely that a similar con or state commitment will be obtained again. His argument goes on to suggest civic private support is a goal for Nathaniel Witherall to aspire to, but it overlooks the fact that the Friends of Nathaniel Witherall has raised private contributions of $1.2 million for the benefit of Nathaniel Witherall in the last four years, and the board's business plan commits it to a public capital campaign for Project Renew when required town approvals have been obtained. To throw out five years of effort by a board and a town building committee, whose only satisfaction is service to the town, would be a disappointing conclusion to Project Renew. In the course of debating Project Renew before the various bodies having jurisdiction over the issue, including the RTM, we have endeavored to answer every question asked.
One minute.
We have held two public hearings for RTM members. We have appeared before each of the committees to which the moderator assigned the matter. In the past week, we visited every RTM district meeting. The questions asked were searching. The dialogue was civil. I hope our answers were informative. I have lived in this town for more than 40 years. I have learned that the RTM, though its processes occasionally seem laborious, generally gets it right. I think you will get this issue right by approving Item One on the call. Thank you.
State Representative Libby Florin, we have to get her out of here. She has important business to attend to.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's really an honor to be back here and return to my representative town meeting roots and to be able to stand here in support of Nathaniel Witherall. My advocacy began on July 15, 2002, when I met with the State Department of Social Services to obtain a certificate of need. The proposal was for construction of a brand-new witherall facility. Now, I have walked on every twist and turn along memory lane since 2002, have been involved in the issuance of now three certificates of need. I think the arguments on both sides have been adequately and articulately, and eloquently, really, discussed tonight, so I think I'll just go right to the present. Project Renew, the proposal before you tonight encompasses all of the lessons learned in the past nine years. Project Renew renovates the existing physical plant and brings into code compliance, and brings it into code compliance, while creating up-to-date rehabilitation capability. Project Renew works. The state has granted a certificate of need. The Board of Estimate and taxation has approved the financials. Architectural and engineering planning details are in progress. The goal of Project Renew is to improve healthcare outcomes in a cost-effective, sustainable, efficient manner. Project Renew does work. Nathaniel Witherall is a Greenwich treasure, and the care provided to residents by witherall staff is unequaled. Please vote in favor of Project Renew and restore this Greenwich jewel to its luster. Thank you.
All right. I think if we withhold the applause, we might wrap this up a little sooner. First-electman Peter Tessie to be followed by Drew Marzullo.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I rise in support of your approval to fund Project Renew. We heard very eloquently from the Chairman of the Board of the Nathaniel Witherall, Mr. Ormsby, who has dedicated close to a decade, leading the effort to analyze and present the most viable option for this skilled nursing facility to you, the RTM, and to town government at large. And I want to take a moment to thank him and the members of his board for this perseverance and dedication to address an issue that in many respects is unique to Greenwich, in that we are one of two municipalities that operate a skilled nursing facility, but not like Witherall. So, Witherall is unique, and the folks that we've had leading the effort to provide a viable option for its future are unique in that they have done their due diligence. They are of the utmost skill themselves when you look at their resumes, and I think that's important because I think it's a testament to the government we have here in Greenwich, which is citizen-driven, and the fact that we have our peers working on behalf of our most frail in the community to see to it that a resource that has served that population for close to 100 years remains, and not only remains, but is adapted to reflect modern challenges for those dealing with lifetime disabilities and age. We have tonight an assembly of people across the political spectrum, governmental spectrum, and nongovernmental spectrum within our community. I think, again, that is a testament to the legacy that Witherall has provided and has fostered. This institution would not be as successful, is it not, for the employees? And I think it's important to note that, given the fact that its employees remain dedicated and stable in terms of their tenure with the facility, they have a vested interest in its success. Their work is more a labor of love than a vocation, and we see time and time again, as we visit for various events, that that comes through in the response of its residents. Folks who may be limited in certain capacities but certainly can express themselves through eye movement and smiles and all-around pleasantry. So, tonight you have a big decision to make, and frankly, I think the vast majority of you have already made up your mind as to what should be done and what is the right thing to do for Nathaniel Witherall, for the town for which this facility is an asset. And I ask you to stand firm and strong, having full confidence in your town government and all of your peers who have worked tirelessly to analyze and present this solution to you, and vote yes. If you should be uncertain, I would ask you to continue to listen tonight to those who will present their thoughts to you and hark back to a sentiment expressed by our 40th president, who said, "If not us, who? If not now, when?" So, please, tonight's the night. Let's do it and move Witherall forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Marzullo to be followed by Alice Melly.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, visiting guests, thank you for this opportunity. Before I begin my brief remarks, I would like to extend my gratitude and appreciation to the outgoing elected officials of this body. It's been a privilege serving with all of you, and we really have, on a collaborative effort, done some really good things. I wish you the best of luck in your next journey, whatever that may bring. And speaking of journeys, there has been no project in recent memory that has been on a longer journey than Nathaniel Witherall. Witherall has been subject to debate for decades, starting in 1930...no, I'm kidding. Tonight's pending vote will mark the conclusion of endless vetting and multiple studies, and it's because of hard work, fiscal management, and, most important, a dedicated staff, paid and volunteer, that has made this skilled nursing home facility no like...like no other. I respectfully ask this body to overwhelmingly vote in favor of Project Renew sending a clear endorsement. As elected officials, we have a responsibility to the people we represent, both young and old. We have a responsibility that I would argue, a moral one as well. It has cared for this facility, this rehab facility, for thousands of people, assisting people to walk again and serving as place...a place to recover. We have heard, and we will continue to hear, that yes, Witherall is a worthy project worth saving, but $22 million is very expensive. Taxes are going to increase. The town should not be in the nursing home business altogether. In tonight's vote, some of it is based on emotion. I will answer that by saying that $22 million is a lot of money, and emotion does probably factor in. The question of whether Greenwich should be in the nursing home business, if we're not already...if we weren't already in it, maybe, but we are in, so now we must continue. I will end by saying that the return on our investment, not necessarily monetary return, far exceeds the dollar amount being considered for allocation tonight. So, once again, I ask that we overwhelmingly send a message and vote for, in favor, of Project Renew. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Melly to be followed by Steve Walco. I invite all prospective speakers, when called, to come forward and can sit in one of those chairs up front. And I remind all speakers, if your name is on a list and you decide to waive the opportunity to speak, you are free to do that. Ms. Melly, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I'm delighted to stand before you after 10 years plus of an absence. From the very beginning of discussions about Nathaniel Witherall services, I have not been in favor of it. The primary responsibility of government is public safety, education, and basic infrastructure. In many instances, other services for all populations can be provided more efficiently and effectively by the private sector. I can remember consulting with Bob Morgan and Ed Gomo, who you all remember, I'm sure, and we came to the conclusion after these conversations that I would, in fact, try to lead the BET, although it was unsuccessful, in turning down this proposal over 10 years ago. My interest in exploring the efficient and effective services for service to seniors has continued ever since, and in 2006, I ended up joining the Board of Greenwich Adel Daycare that was housed at that time in Nathaniel Witherall. So, my interest in senior services has been of long duration. I'm not certainly speaking in a lobbying way for daycare. However, I do think that we can hunt for a better model to deliver those services, and I have spent the last five years trying to help develop a better model. We all know that Stanford's the only other place in Connecticut that is providing these services, and they are being discontinued, nursing homes all over our country. Management has done a wonderful job of improving the delivery of services at Nathaniel Witherall, and the addition of physical rehab has enabled to be break-even, at least, and perhaps a little bit more. But is that the obligation of government? Total town funding is going to be very expensive, particularly when you consider the amount that has been spent since the very beginning, and I question whether this represents the best delivery of town resources.
Thirty seconds.
I would urge you to reconsider and not vote for this program at this time and work on a new model.
Thank you. Current BET Chair Steve Walco to be followed by former First-electman Jim Lash.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Moderator. I got tripped up. There are all these people coming back, Alice and Jim, and my God, I'm in great company. I rise tonight in support of Project Renew and report the BET's unanimous support for this important project. You've already heard from several speakers not only what the BET decided, the conditions that we placed on it, and you even heard from an email that I drafted last week. I'm certainly not going to reiterate those...that...those comments or the conditions. But I do want to talk a little bit about the discussion that has occurred over the past several days regarding whether or not this project takes a precedence or will invariably delay other projects. And the simple answer is certainly yes, and for these reasons. In the context of our current BET guidelines and the newly adopted fund balance policy and debt policy, this project, together with Central Fire Station, MISA, and Project Renew, are the priorities of the town. Other capital projects will invariably be delayed. We can't have it all at the same time. It will dominate...these three projects will dominate our capital landscape over the next five years or so, and after accounting for capital maintenance, so let's not get into the problems we got into previously with not funding capital maintenance, funding for new capital projects will be extremely limited. That being said, this type of prioritization happens each and every year that this body meets during the budget process. We set priorities, and this body sets priorities, every May. Every May, you make a decision to set one project above another. This is no different. Certainly, no one here believes that our capital plan will forever be taken care of and that there will be no projects on our capital plan. Every year, there will be new projects. Every year, there will be new prioritizations. But I dare say that if we continue down our current path of funding Central Fire Station, MISA, and Project Renew, those projects combined with the Glenville School, Hamilton Avenue School, and the Public Safety... School, and the Public Safety Complex, and I would argue that we’ve accomplished certainly a great deal within a limited period of time, all with keeping mill rate increases of between 2% to 4%. Of course, we’ll have more work to do. There’ll be more projects to come before us. And again, we’ll have to make those priorities. So I encourage you to support Project Renew. The BET has looked at this, has looked at the consultant’s report, has inspected, dissected, and reviewed, has met with not only HDG but representatives from three of your committees. And based on that analysis, we believe that this is in the best interest of the town. And for that, a unanimous vote of support for Project Renew. And if I may ask your indulgence, Mr. Moderator, lastly, since this is my last night before you as Chairman of the BET, I would like to say thank you. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you and engaging in lively debate. I feel a little guilty, though, standing before you. I feel like I have received much more than I have given. I owe you, and I truly believe that in the years to come, you have a wonderful First Selectman, a wonderful Board of Selectmen, and a great BET to help lead. This, with what I’d like to lastly thank—the moderator—for his unwavering support for transparency and efficiency. He is someone I could always count on to ensure that—the correct process was followed. I will forever be indebted to this group and to the moderator in particular for his valuable counsel and advice. Thank you all again.
Thank you, Mr. Walco. Our former First Selectman Jim Lash, welcome back, sir.
Thank you. It’s very nice to be here. I know some of you would think I wouldn’t say that, but I— [laughter] But it is. I’m very—I’m very happy to be here, and I promise not to do it very often. This process came to my attention in January and February of 2000, when I first was on the BET and shortly thereafter Chair of the Budget Committee. And it feels like I’ve been talking about this project ever since, and I guess we all have been. And I think that’s one of the points I just want to remind people of this evening. A lot of people have looked very hard at this project. They’ve looked at many of the alternatives that are being discussed again tonight. They’ve looked at the possibilities. They’ve analyzed them. They’ve paid good town money to consultants to analyze them. They’ve massaged them. They’ve gone back over them and thought about them in different ways. They’ve talked to outsiders about whether or not they were interested in buying the facility. We could—we’ve really worked hard on this, all of you have, and your predecessors in this body have. Certainly, the Richardson Committee did. We spent many hours in those meetings. So we should be comfortable making whatever decision we make tonight. We’ve really spent a tremendous amount of time on it. And as Mr. Ormsby said, this isn’t the last opportunity ever to consider the future of this institution. There will be other opportunities once it’s been modernized and rebuilt. The second point that I want to make is—and you all know I play with numbers, and I’ve certainly done my share of forecasts. And we’ve had many forecasts developed about this facility, and almost every one of those forecasts showed that it was never possible for it to make money. That’s what those forecasts always say. And yet, for the last four years, it has not only covered its day-to-day operating costs, but it has managed to also cover the allocation of town services that it benefits from. And so, as Mr. Ormsby said, return funds to the town. Now, if all the forecasts say you can’t make money, how can it be making money? And the answer is, if you have excellent staff and very good board members and support from the community and outside experts who will volunteer their time, they find ways to make money. They find ways to improve efficiency. They find ways to schedule the staff more effectively. And that’s what’s happened here. It happens in other town departments. They don’t get talked about quite as much as this one has. But what you’re seeing here is—is the result of the hard work of all the people who have been involved in this over the years. The suggestions that committees like the Richardson Committee made found their way into the thinking of the staff and the board and the outside consultants. And those variations allowed them to find ways to bring the operations back into not only break even but positive cash flow for the town’s benefit. And I think—I think we have to believe that the people who sit in your seats in the future, the people who sit on the BET in the future, the people who sit on the Board in the future, are going to make the same kind of effort, and we can expect that they too will find ways to reduce the cost of the operation, make it more efficient. Finally, there is rightly a lot of angst in the country right now about where healthcare is going to go in the United States and what we can afford to pay, and whether you’re talking about Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance, or otherwise. And we—we have every reason to be concerned about that. The public debate is ongoing, and it’s not going to settle down anytime soon. So therefore, you have to wonder what reimbursement rates will the town facility receive for the services it provides, and how will it manage if those reimbursement rates aren’t meeting costs to find a way to break even.
30 seconds.
I think the thing you need to keep in mind is that, as a matter of public policy at the federal level, we can’t create a healthcare system in this country that puts all the nursing homes in the country out of business. The population is aging, and we have to have a reimbursement system that gives good, well-run nursing homes a chance to break even or make some money. And we have a good and well-run nursing home, and I think if anyone can survive, this one will, and it will prosper. So I encourage you to approve this item this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Richardson, former Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee, and a name you’ve heard often tonight, former Chairman of the Special Committee on Nathaniel Witherell, to be followed by Ed Crummick. And what a great pleasure to have you here tonight, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nice to be here. Nice to see you all here. And I’ve heard my name taken in vain a few times, so—and that’s—that’s been a pleasant surprise. I’m here because I favor adoption of the pending resolution, and I would like to make four points as briefly as I can. First, many of you will recall, as Mr. Ormsby already has, that on April 9, 2007, we had the culmination of the extended debate about the form of governance for Witherell in the future. The vote was taken, and the vote was, if I recall correctly, 174 keeping it as a town department and 26 against and 3 abstaining. I was on the losing side, along with 13 of my colleagues from the Special Committee, for whom I have great and continuing respect. But we lost, and I think it’s only fair to say that the text of the resolution that was adopted that evening is still applicable. And that means, my first point being, that we should defer, not indefinitely, but until such time as this project has been completed and has had the opportunity to operate for a while, a further discussion of the question of the form of governance. It should stay as a town department until this project is done and normal operations are returned to the institution. Secondly, it has also been suggested that a rehab function is really not needed in the existing marketplace, and that spending money on one detracts from serving those in need of long-term care. I must disagree on both points. Our rehab service provides really needed help to Greenwich residents in recovering from orthopedic and other surgery, those who want to have the convenience of a local but qualified facility. The rehab fees, in addition, along with the private pay revenues, also gives the institution a financial return so that we can continue to serve the Medicaid population, whose long-term care loses the institution about $2.4 million a year. And that’s a very important nut to cover. And it’s because of private pay and the rehab function that we’re able to continue with the Medicaid service. So I think one must have to say frankly that the vitality of the rehab service is crucial to the viability of the long-term care service. Third point, there have been suggestions already covered this evening that—by Mr. Walco and by Mr. Lash and others—that the proposal to do this is crowding out other valuable capital projects. That’s true to a certain degree. I wouldn’t understate in any way what Mr. Walco has said.
30 seconds.
But let’s face it, Witherell has been waiting for a long time. In equity, it deserves to be given a fair chance and to be voted on positively. Finally, the downsizing of this project takes the risk down as well. We’re half a-half much financial risk as we had in 2002’s proposal. So I think we should go ahead. The shortfalls are manageable. There are always going to be various uncertainties. The Board has demonstrated its capacity and its resilience. I think we ought to continue to rely upon them and approve the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ed Crummick to be followed by Stuart Adalberg.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I’m here to complete some unfinished business. I believe I haven’t addressed the RTM on many occasions. I think one of the last times I addressed the RTM was when I was Chairman of the Board of Social Services in 1994, and I asked you to help save Parsonage Cottage. And you did so. And because of that, 40 Greenwich residents are living in a state-of-the-art, licensed home for the age. And tonight, I ask you to help save Nathaniel Witherell. Now, in my experience, this has been one of the most scrutinized projects of all time. You—you heard many people talk about that. But I just want to put in perspective, if I may, the numbers that were reported by the—the consultant hired by the BET. And according to those numbers, and this—using the Certificate of Need Construction estimate of $22.5 million, up to $12 million of which would be reimbursed. Now, likely, that would be 50% of that number. So the net would be $16.5 million for the construction cost to renovate this, if you use a 50-50 payer mix. Well, that’s equivalent of a school renovation project. And we in Greenwich have renovated schools. And as a matter of fact, the most recent example was MISA, where you took the long-term view for the benefit of the students of Greenwich. And I’m asking today, take that same long-term view to benefit the seniors of Greenwich. Now, with respect to the projected deficit, and the consultant has said it’s $21.9 millions over 20 years. We’ve heard it’s less than that today. But even if you take a million a year—and David said it’s now projected to be 700 a year—that’s approximately the annual cost of the senior tax credit. But for that deficit, over that short—relatively short 20-year period, you get a $24 million a year program that benefits the most needy—and I would submit, one of the most needy portions of our population, the frail elderly. And that deficit will have no apprecional effect on the mill rate. You have to look at it from that point of view. So you’re getting a—you’re getting a $24 million program for the senior, for frail elderly, at a deficit of $700,000. And of course, that deficit goes away when baby boomers like me need the services, the way our parents’ generation need and use the services today. So I ask you, take the long view, pass the resolution and appropriation, and please, save Nathaniel Witherell.
Stuart Adalberg to be followed by Michael Watzek, District 11. Is Mr. Adalberg here? Mr. Watzek, District 11, to be followed by Sam Dibler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I’m Mike Watzek, member from District 11 and an alternate on the BOC. I attended the BET public hearing, as well as the recent public hearing for RTM members held by Nathaniel Witherell. First, I would like to salute Nathaniel Witherell for its past, present, and future service to the Greenwich and surrounding communities. May it live long and prosper. However, I’m going to vote against this resolution tonight, and you should too. I’ll tell you why. In its current form, Project Renew poses serious, long-term financial risks to the First, the 30-year cash subsidy projected by HDG, the consultant hired by the town, is over $20 million. That’s if everything goes as expected. If Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement rates stay at their current levels and keep up with inflation—if they don’t, things could be much worse. Nathaniel Witherell has about 200 beds. So that $20 million long-term operating subsidy works out to about $100,000 per bed. That’s a lot of money for a service that benefits, let’s be frank, very few Greenwich residents. Second, the $20 million bond issue will crowd out other town capital projects that would serve far more Greenwich families. As I’ve talked to neighbors and friends who live in Greenwich, I have repeatedly heard them ask, “Why is the town of Greenwich in the nursing home business?” They believe that schools, and fire stations, and police, and parks, and sewers are the town’s mission. But they question whether running a nursing home, especially at a loss, and especially if it crowds out other capital spending more central to the town’s mission, they question whether that really makes sense.
30 seconds.
Rejecting this appropriation and bonding issue does not mean closing Nathaniel Witherell. I don’t want that either. But it would force a discussion about whether and how Nathaniel Witherell could be relaunched in a new structure outside of town ownership. I have urged—I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Sam Dibler to be followed by Chris Thurlo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. The Commission on Aging is unanimously endorsing Project Renew, has noted that for the past four years, it has operated in the black. And this is the result of the Witherell’s success in ensuring three of the four factors that influence nursing home choice: good management, world-class staff, and excellent programs and services. It is a five-star Medicare-rated facility, and the only one five-star rated of the three in this community. These factors attract patients needing rehabilitation that is reimbursed by Medicare, and they attract self-pay residents as well. It’s true that Medicaid does not pay the full cost of care for residents eligible for its reimbursements, but attracting Medicare reimbursable residents and self-paying residents are keys to the Witherell’s continuing financial success. The fourth factor that is considered by prospective patients and residents choosing a facility is the physical plant. In my nine years as Director of the Commission on Aging, I have never heard anyone say they have chosen to go to the Witherell because of the four bedrooms or the antiquated facility. Other competing skilled nursing facilities need to be considered as part of our discussion as well, because the other facilities, the four-star ones, are looking to attract Medicare-reimbursed and self-pay patients for the sake of their bottom lines as well. If they still don’t have the world-class staff and excellent programs that are the Witherell’s competitive advantages, be assured that they will have them. Witherall's competitive advantages, be assured that they will have them, and that they are working on them as we speak, and most already have better physical plants. When they have upgraded their staffing and services, they stand to outcompete the Witherall for its Medicare-reimbursed and self-pay patients, and to threaten the Witherall's financial stability. A no vote permits the competition more time to eliminate this competitive advantage. And if they do, we cannot hope at that point to turn over an antiquated, uncompetitive facility to a for-profit or not-for-profit entity and have it retain its five-star rating. The Witherall operates in a highly competitive environment, and it will for the foreseeable future.
Thirty seconds.
Vote for what it needs to continue to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Thurlo to be followed by Karen Sodikon.
Good evening. I'm Chris Thurlo, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Nathaniel Witherall. I'm not here to talk about bricks and bucks, which is what most speakers have talked about. I want to talk to you about the people that we serve. Several years ago, when I was the registrar of voters, one of the two registrars, we used to go to the hospital and the nursing homes to execute absentee ballots. And one afternoon, we went to a nursing home, and I went in and told the lady that I had her ballot and would she like to vote. And she said, no, I don't think it matters anymore. And I tried to persuade her that it did matter, but she would not hear of it and didn't want to vote. So I said, okay, before I leave, is there anything else I could do? And she looked at me and said, well, yes, there is, but I don't think you're going to want to do it. And I thought, she's probably right. Wasn't going to want to do it. So I gathered up my courage, and I said, well, try me. And she said, would you sit with me and hold my hand? And I said, sure. So I sat down, and for five or six minutes, she closed her eyes and held my hand and rocked back and forth, put my hand on her chest, and then up to her face. And after a while, she opened her eyes and said, my husband always held my hand, and he's not here. So she said, no one has held my hand since he died. And I said, well, how about your family? She said, they're all gone. There's no one left to love me anymore. I don't think I matter to anyone. I think she does matter. I matter, you matter, so do my children and my grandchildren, and we shower ourselves with blessings in this town. We spend 99% of our budget on ourselves. And I think we could spend one-fifth of 1% to show these people, because they are members of our Greenwich family, because they live here, they do matter.
That's a tough one to follow. Karen Sodikon to be followed by Doug Wells, District 2.
That's a tough act to follow. Good evening. You've heard all the pros and cons and the issues associated with Project Renew. I'm not going to repeat them, but I will tell you two profoundly personal experiences that influenced my thinking about Nathaniel Witherall. Forgive me if a few of you have heard some of these comments before. In a 10-month period in 2007, I had two very unexpected experiences with my family that involved Nathaniel Witherall. My late husband, suffering from cancer and Parkinson's, fell at home and broke his hip. He was operated on but needed then to go to rehab. With his multiple medical conditions, he wasn't eligible, literally. Witherall came to the rescue, partially because of Chris Thurlo. He spent three weeks there, left, and walked for the rest of his life, which was six months, unassisted, thanks to Witherall's rehab program. Ten months later, my mother, visiting from California, had a massive stroke on Christmas Eve, was not expected to live, but did. After two weeks at Greenwich Hospital, needed to go to a rehab. And of course, my first choice was Witherall for two reasons. One, my positive experience, but secondly, I knew that she had to be close to home. She had no idea what had happened to her. She couldn't talk, she couldn't walk. It appeared to be an absolutely hopeless situation. After seven weeks, she left Nathaniel Witherall. She began to speak again. She was walking with a walker. She went back to Southern California, where my father and my mother live independently at the age of 89. Nathaniel Witherall's five-star care and increasingly strengthening rehab program was above and beyond any expectation I had with both experiences. Before these two experiences, I had little concept of what Nathaniel Witherall was, this very caring, town-owned facility, where the vulnerable are welcomed and assured that they have a place to recover or ride out their traumatic health events. As I told the BET last month, some of you are too young in the room to relate to Nathaniel Witherall, and some of you are old enough to deny relating to Nathaniel Witherall. But the reality is that you too might need a Nathaniel Witherall. So let's preserve this unique facility. Let's support Project Renew with a vote of yes. Thank you.
Doug Wells, District 2, to be followed by Thomas Siccardi.
Ladies and gentlemen, I won't vote for this item, and I'm going to urge you not to vote for it either. I was going to quote Alice Melly, but better yet, she showed up and spoke herself, because I was here the evening when she said that the purpose of town government is to provide essential services to the broad spectrum of our population. This is not an essential service, and it provides only to a very small group of people. I think Mr. Drake indicated in a letter that was circulated to the RTM, about 40 elderly are in this facility on a year-to-year basis. At any one time, we're only providing for a couple of hundred people. And our present BET head has indicated that we are taking money away from other projects that will benefit a lot broader range of people, a broader spectrum of people. Mr. Drake is only asking, in his BOC report to you, that we reconsider the model. And Mr. Quimby said that, while the model was considered by you in 2007, that we weren't going to change the public versus private employees of the facility, and we weren't going to change the ownership. I can only point out that one thing very important happened after 2007, and that was 2008. We had a meltdown, which provided for a lot of different financial assumptions than we had available to us in 2007. Our real estate, conveyance, tax revenues went down, our money from building permits went down, and a lot of people in this town are making less money now than they were in 2007. So I don't think that we should be precluded from reconsidering what we said that we should do in 2007, because things have changed dramatically. The only other thing I would like to say is that everybody has talked about this board. They've done an excellent job, but boards come and go. Many of you remember the board that was in place in 2004. They weren't as good. Mr. Quimby is not going to stay on as much as I would like him to for 20 years, to continue to make sure that this facility is well-run. So we can't expect that the facility will definitely be the same well-governed facility it is today. So for that reason, I will vote no for this, and I urge you to do so as well.
Thank you. Thomas Siccardi to be followed by Frank Pozluzny, District 8.
Thank you. I'm on the board of the Nathaniel Witherall and on the Finance Committee as well. I'm going to shoot for 45 seconds, just perspective. You've heard numbers. Nathaniel Witherall revenue covers expenses, and that's $23 million a year, estimated 2%, 2.5% increase in going forward. Twenty years, that's almost half a billion dollars. So we're asking you to invest possibly no more than 20 million, so that to preserve for the town a half a billion dollars of care to the elderly. Thank you.
Frank Pozluzny to be followed by Jim Buttel, who is the final speaker who has signed up on item one.
Good evening. I'll be very brief. In the last couple of years, I had the very unfortunate and unpleasant experience of losing a number of family of members, my family members, and seeing several friends of mine pass away after long illnesses. Also, last year, got a degree, a little CNA, Certified Nursing Assistance Certification from Norwalk Community College, to look after some of my ill friends. And in that experience, I was able to visit four nursing homes and several hospitals in training. And I also visited another half a dozen other facilities, as my loved ones were ill and placed in facilities outside of this program exposure. And I want to tell you something about privatization and bottom lining. And when we're talking about privatization, we're talking about streamlining and bottom lining, and I'll tell you exactly how it's accomplished. It's not done on the model of a town-owned, town-operated, town watchdogged, as well as Nathaniel Witherall is under all our eyes. But what they do is, they find the least, the bottom, the easiest, the cheapest, most profitable business model they could come up with. And the people that I was in training with in my CNA program were helping me, these were people that were all working double shifts. They're working 16 hours a day, six days a week, to make ends meet being breadwinners in a very low-paying position. They don't have the time to care for people. They're not allowed the time to care for people. They're not in the business model being paid to care for people. They are pushed, they are exhausted, and they're asked to streamline, cut corners, get it done, and make a profit for these organizations. And in some cases, some of the facilities I saw have an incredible presentation, adirondack architecture that's stunning to the eye. But when you go in and you try to find a resolution to an issue, and find out who really is running, who owns, who's managing, who's directly responsible for an issue, you can spend a week in a circumnavigated, disjointed management network that leads you to no resolution. Whereas with Nathaniel Witherall, you can go right to the management, you go right to the town that's running this operation. And there's, if anybody were to compare the services provided by these very expensive, high-paid, very well-promoted, very architecturally appealing presentation facilities that are popping up all over, good business, good money being made, big investments in them, you'll find the difference between that care and the care you're going to get at a place like Nathaniel Witherall. And maybe we, the town, only two towns in the state of Connecticut have these facilities, but that may be just an embarrassment to the state of Connecticut, because the direction I see it's going and the quality of care deteriorating the way I've seen it, more towns should be taking on this responsibility and taking care of their elderly. We cut baseball fields to make sure kids can go there, even when there's no game scheduled.
Thirty seconds.
And if we could do that, we could take care of the people that have spent their all, their lives paying taxes, all their lives, so that we could live comfortably. Thank you.
Jim Buttel to be followed by Bob Tuthill.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, as the outgoing chairman of District 8 and soon to move into District 2, I look forward to debates with Mr. Wells. Let me begin by saying, I just want to address one argument that's been made by a number of people tonight about what is the proper role of government. You have heard both sides, and I respect both sides of the argument. But those who say that the private sector can do it better, I would echo the last speaker and simply say that this institution, which is a public institution, has a five-star Medicare rating. The majority of the institutions at the very bottom, that you hear about on the news because of mistreatment of clients, are privately owned. I have degrees in economics, and I would tell you that you can't use a private sector solution to healthcare, including long-term healthcare, simply because we're not rational consumers of it. If we were, we wouldn't spend 60% of what we're going to spend on healthcare in our lifetime in the last six months of life. It just doesn't make sense. But we do it. Those who say that this isn't the proper role of government to be in a nursing home, well, I would say, is it the proper role of the government to be operating ferry services? Let's start there. Is it the beaches? All the other things, the arch center, all the other things we offer to the able-bodied in Greenwich? Maybe you should start by getting out of those businesses if you don't think it's the proper role of government. We heard in this debate, and it hasn't been stated tonight, we're going to have a dramatic increase in the number of Alzheimer's patients because of the aging, not just of the country's population, but particularly the graying of Greenwich. And there's a link on the town website to the United Way study that has all the demographic numbers that show you where this is going. I would say that this is the proper role of government. If I have to pay, as a homeowner, extra taxes to make sure that the Alzheimer's patient is taken care of at Nathaniel, I would much rather spend the money on that than some of the other things we spend money on. This is a group that that's the only town service they receive. I should say that, as the executive director of TAG, we provide transportation to some of these clients. I would end with just the thought that, I think it's the late Senator Dirksen said, "The enemy of good legislation is the quest for perfect legislation." This is the best plan we have, and as I say, I for one, if we're going to spend $4 million plus on gems, we're going to spend $100 million plus on our school system, I for one am willing to spend up to a million a year, if that's what it costs, to subsidize Nathaniel until the model becomes such that it becomes self-sustaining. But this is, it's a population that is unrepresented in this body, with one exception. The exception is the short-term rehab end. There are many, you've heard a few stories, but there are many members of this body who have benefited from that. They are here tonight to vote as members, because they've done their rehab at Nathaniel. So I would urge you, my fellow members, to support this resolution, support the good work that has been done over the years by many members of this body, some of whom I didn't always agree with, but one, thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Bob Tuthill, District 4. All right, Mr. Tuthill has moved the previous question. Motion for the previous question is a motion to cut off debate. It is not itself debatable and requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of cutting off debate on item one and proceeding to vote on the merits, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion has carried. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number one, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item number five now comes before us. Do we have the resolution on that item? Yes. Mr. Settlemeyer nomination? Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a member of the Southwest Regional Planning Agency for a term expiring 3/31/15, Paul C. Settlemeyer.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. May we have the committee reports on this item, beginning with Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening. Paul Settlemeyer came to the Land Use Committee meeting last Monday night.
All right, I'll ask our district chairs to please conduct the voting quietly and request that all give attention to our speaker. Mr. Berg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. Paul Settlemeyer came before the Land Use Committee last Monday night. Paul explained that SWRPA, that is the Southwest Regional Planning Agency, is in effect a vestige of our former county government. Among the tasks of SWRPA that we see are the, is that SWRPA certified our town's plan of con- of Conservation and Development, and it does that for the eight towns in SWRPA, which include Stanford, Norwalk, Wilton, New Kane and Weston, Westport, and Darien. You may also be aware that SWRPA is working on a plan for Route One. If you haven't seen that, I would urge you to take a look at the website. They're working on, they're working on a plan for the rivers, the Mayanis, the Sagatuck, and the watershed, and various other regional projects. We had questions about transportation and development issues in the region. Concern was voiced that, about certain regional projects that are under development in the town of Greenwich, and Paul replied that SWRPA does not comment on issues that are before our Planning and Zoning Commission, for example. Paul Settlemeyer is a former chairman of SWRPA. This will be his third term as one of the two Greenwich representatives to SWRPA. Locally, Paul is a member of this RTM in District Two. He is chairing the POCD Transportation Committee, and he will also be serving on the First Selectmen's Task Force on Economic Development. Our vote on Paul Settlemeyer was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Our next committee report to be given by Vince DiMarco, Chair of our Transportation
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate your separating these items to allow me to report, and I'm not last. Transportation is not last tonight, how about that? But I didn't want to take up any time needlessly. The committee met at its regular meeting time last Tuesday night, and I was pleased that more than one member was prepared to make a motion to take up item five. And with four districts unrepresented at the time that the motion passed unanimously, as it did on the vote itself, districts one, three, four, and eight were absent. The committee recognizes clearly the important role of SWRPA in providing planning services and coordination and prioritization of state and federal-funded infrastructure projects, a great percentage of which pertain to transportation in our eight-town region. Likewise, the committee recognizes the service that Mr. Settlemeyer has provided the town in his years as a SWRPA rep, and its value to the RTM primarily through the Transportation Committee in keeping the committee informed of not only SWRPA plans and projects, but those that were conducted, that are conducted by the state DOT. Having chaired the TC for Transportation Committee for several terms, I was also pleased to find that several current members were interested in taking on leadership positions next term, but more importantly, that members in attendance expressed a commitment to further increase the value of the committee, not only to the full RTM but to the town, through more frequent engagement with departments that directly relate to transportation services and infrastructure. I will be applauding that effort as a citizen advocate for improvements, and will probably stand here before you soon as an advocate for improvements for one thing or another. I will miss the responsibility and the camaraderie of fellow members of the Transportation Committee, my district, and throughout this body. It's been an honor, and at times, it's been very gratifying. Thank you all for your time. Have a great 2012.
Mr. Von Kaiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, first of all, I'd like to wish you a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, in this wonderful season coming up. We met last Tuesday, Mr. Settlemeyer, who has been for our committee many times. We voted 12-0-0, and happy holidays.
Discussion on item five. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number five, and proceed to poll your delegation? We will await the result of this vote before proceeding to adjourn the meeting. We have the result of the vote on item one, which is the Project Renew at Nathaniel Witherall. Those in favor, 153. Opposed, 28. Abstaining, 10. That item has carried. We have the result of the vote on item five, the appointment of Paul Settlemeyer to be a member of SWRPA. Those in favor, 175. Opposed, 0. Abstaining, 5. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting and absent objection, the meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home. Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to you all.